Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 5th Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. I am Board Chair Rick Vest. With me is Vice Chair Deb Shore, Commissioner Sean Fleurade. I knew I was going to do that sooner or later. Commissioner Roma Amundson and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
The Confident of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, March 30, 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Number two are claims, approval of things processed through April 6, 2021.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all claims. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Dan, I'm sorry, Clerk. Mr. Clerk, can I change my vote to abstain?
On, um, on claims?
Yes. Thank you.
So be four yes, one abstention. Number three is special presentation. Commissioners Award of Excellence for June 2020 awarded to Jenny Ryan, Human Services in a category of productivity.
Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services, Sarah Hoyle.
Jenny Ryan.
And thank you today for recognizing Ms. Ryan. During the pandemic, when everything was moved remotely, we had two separate locations, two separate services being offered, and we had to figure out how to make everything still available to the public, but doing so remotely. And Jenny took the lead on that. She made all of the applications in a fillable format, easy accessible to the public. She made sure people had the information they needed to access public services and to get information they need for their youth at home. So I don't know what we would have done without her. In addition to that, we had grant reviews. So it was trying to figure out how we were going to facilitate grant reviews via Zoom and online, which was a challenge in itself. We submitted about five different federal grant applications over talking to each other over the phone, trying to get things submitted. So anyways, Jenny, we couldn't have made it without her. So thank you for recognizing her today.
And don't forget the conference.
Oh, and the statewide conference. There's so much that she did during this time that I cannot remember it all. But yeah, she took the lead in a statewide conference with over 400 participants, national speakers. It was four days, right? Five days? I forget. Five days.
I think at this point, I'd ask Dan to read the resolution.
Jenny Ryan has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for June 2020. Jenny works as an administrative aide too and began working for the county on September 12, 2012. She was nominated by Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Administrator, in a category of productivity. In her nomination, Ms. Hoyle states, "When a coronavirus pandemic hit in March, Ms. Ryan was instrumental in ensuring both officers within our department had the resources available to them to telecommute. This included converting approximately 10 documents to fillable online documents as well as updating a new website." Ms. Ryan took the initiative to learn how to set up online meetings. She has set up approximately one online meeting for each workday, some of them consisting of over 150, or over 50 people. A portion of these online meetings were grant review committees with an entirely new grant review process. Setting up a process of reviewing over $2 million of funding between four different committees, all done remotely, is no easy task. Ms. Ryan was able to execute this with no additional funding required. A review of the committees yielded members thought the process was effective online. Ms. Hoyle concludes, "Well, Ms. Ryan was instrumental in ensuring our team had the resources to work safely in their home. She was also able to streamline processes for our customers and employees. While we long for the day we can have regular business again, some of the online forms and grant review processes Ms. Ryan created will become part of a regular and will benefit those we serve for years to come. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Jenny Ryan with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of June 2020."
It gives me great pleasure to give this to you, Jenny. And in my opinion, it's very overdue. I remember when you first got this position, and I have seen you just blossom in it. And in addition to all of the things that were listed in the resolution and all the things that Sarah addressed, the attitude that you bring to it is never, oh, I'm frustrated and this is too much. I always see you just take charge and just matter-of-factly, this is how we can get this done, and you figure out how to do that. And I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jenny, before you go.
Before I go.
I want to make sure any of the other commissioners got their turn with you.
I would. And I just want to talk about the partnership, I mean, between you and the other Human Services Team members, but particularly between you and Sarah, because the way you work together is truly inspiring. And, you know, Sarah is out saying, oh, sure, we can do this. You know, we can make this work. But we know that back in the office, somebody's actually going to be, you know, working together to make that happen. And so you are a valuable member not only of the Human Services Team, but of our team as well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Shaw?
You took a really big job this year, and you didn't just achieve it, you crushed it. Really nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Roma, go ahead.
I guess I just would like to say, you know, you are really an unflappable person. I mean, you just get the work done. It's, you seem to make it look easy, because whenever I've come into the office to talk to you folks, you're just right there working and, oh, yeah, you know. And so, yeah, definitely calm, cool, and collected, totally unflappable, and we thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you for taking time and being with us here today. And I've said it numerous times, any day we see Sarah, that's a good day for the board. And now we know why Sarah gets so much done. So thank you for everything you've done for Lancaster County.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next is number four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of addendum to C-12-586 with Journal Technologies, Inc., to see support in hosting services and to have the hosted database transferred to the county to be utilized by a different software provider. The transfer shall be completed by July 30, 2021. Utility number 2095, allowing Windstream Nebraska to replace a communication line due to the removal and replacement of County Culverts E-133 and E-306 at no cost to the county. Amendments to the following county contracts, C-19-236 with Celebrite Inc. for universal forensic extraction device. C-18-228 with J&amp;A Traffic Products for annual supplies, square steel sign post system hardware and accessories. Rightaway contracts of the following. Diane Louise Smith, Southwest 84th Street and West Pioneer Boulevard, in amount of $1,832. James C. Block, Southwest 2nd Street and West Pella Road, in amount $2,053. Kenneth R. Stewart, Southwest 98th Street and West Van Dorn Road, in amount of $959. Leon Jr. and Rogean Bowman, South 12th Street and Pella Road, in amount $474. Phyllis E. Custer, Revocable Trust, South 82nd Street and Wagon Train Road, or, excuse me, Wagon Trail Road, in the amount of $2,039. Todd A. and Megan A. Urkey, South 38th Street and Sage Coach Road, in the amount of $1,629. Douglas D. and Cindy Holden, South 176th Street and Princeton Road, in a total amount of $3,737, in that for two contracts. Received and placed on file, the independent auditor's report for Lancaster County for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, new business. 5A is a resolution, a matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County which have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval of the resolution? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any discussion on this one? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution, a matter of authorizing installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
What I have before you is a resolution to reduce the speed for a portion of South 54th Street, just north of Hickman Road. Hickman did annex an area of South 54th Street recently, and they reduced their speed down to 35 miles an hour. And of course, our speed is set by default at 55 miles an hour, which makes that speed transition not legal per the uniform manual, for the uniform manual traffic control devices. So that's always a mouthful to say not in the acronym, by the way. So that being said, we now need to step the speed limit down and add some 45 mile an hour signs in there and some transitions to make that correct.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a permanent easement for the Lower Platte South Natural Resource District in connection with the construction, reconstruction, operation, maintenance, repair, and inspection of stream bank stability measures designed to stabilize Salt Creek near Old Cheney Road at no cost to the county.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is the proposed easement to the NRD for channel improvements they did. Of course, this is our Old Cheney Bridge, O-37, that we also did embankment stabilization within our right away. What the NRD did was grade back the slopes on this road and put a rock toe in, as well as a drop structure. I guess, I don't know if it's good news or bad news that it's already been tested with our near 100-year water surface elevation a couple weeks ago. No vegetation has grown on it yet, however, we did have some slippage, some erosion mat, but other than that, everything held beautifully. And so, so far, we're really impressed with that. We need to go ahead and finish this up with an easement. As the commissioners may recall, Wilderness Park, the city takes care of the trails and the facilities within it. However, Lancaster County owns it.
Well, that's good news. Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a contract with Cooper Appraisal Group for the appraisal of the easement area on the south side of county structures D-140 and D-232, located on West Branch Oak Road, in amount of $3,200.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The two pipes shown in pink on West Branch Oak Drive are in dire need of replacement. This is for appraisal services associated with the ground on the south side of these pipes.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. IV is an engineering agreement with Felsberg, Holt, and Ullvig for professional engineering services for the survey, environmental, H&amp;H analysis, design, plan preparation, and permitting services for the replacement of County Bridge W-50. The cost of the services is not to exceed $73,040.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The bridge circled in pink on the, I guess that matches my jacket today, how about that? The bridge circled in pink on the map here is on Southwest 29th Street, just north of Panama Road. It was built in 1962, as evident by its plaque. This bridge, sadly, I don't think we'll be able, it's a little too big to be a bridge to Box Culvert conversion, but we'll find out as we start the design for it. The commissioners may recall that I requested additional spending authority to start the design of this bridge at mid-year budget, hoping that as the transportation infrastructure bill rolls forward, that we are able to get some funding to build it.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is setting the salary for Cheryl Waffles, bailiff for referee Jennifer Kowalki, in the amount of $68,912, effective April 15, 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the salary. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a contract with Beathery's Mazer and Love Funeral Home for cremation burial services as outlined in Lancaster County's General Assistance Program from April 1, 2021 through December 31, 2026.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a renewal of the computer matching agreement with the Social Security Administration for the time period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
Move approval? Second.
Motion and a second to approve this renewal. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a contract with Capital City Transport Service, Inc. for annual service corner transport. The contract is for four years, with the option renewed for one additional four-year term. The cost to county is not to exceed $200,000.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is update on COVID-19 on Lancaster County response.
Any new information? I did see on the news last night that the governor received his vaccination and continues to encourage all citizens to go forward with vaccinations when the opportunity presents itself. We are moving forward in the right direction. Let's not do anything to undermine the momentum that we've worked so hard to create. With that, we'd move forward.
Number seven is let's tape update.
And I don't believe we have anything, Dan.
Next is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, we do so at this time.
I'm seeing folks I don't know, but anyone wishing to speak or make a public comment at this time, we'll need you to come forward. I would just add that today is an important day in our city and county as we again have the opportunity to do our duty as citizens and to express our views about who should be leading the City of Lincoln Council, the City Council, the School Board, and the Airport Authority. And so I would encourage everyone to make sure they take advantage of this opportunity. With that, we'll close public comment.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, April 8, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, April 13, 2021, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can reach up 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move, will you turn? Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. I would just add one comment. This one, this, this meeting was not broadcast live due to technical difficulties. The building, we got hit with a power surge, as I understand it, and the folks who do all that good work on our television broadcasts and YouTube and Facebook videos had to scramble because it happened very close to the meeting time. We won't be live with this one, but it will be available later to those who wish to watch it. Kudos to those who made that option available. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
With that, we will move on to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Please open the meeting, Mr. Clerk.
A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, March 16, 2021.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment roll.
Move approval of the additions and deductions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions. Please call the roll.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. This includes Pellic and Finance LLC and AV LLC.
Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register of Deeds. These are two clerical errors that our office made that we present for your approval to correct the assessed values for prior years to provide notice to the taxpayers. They'll have a 30-day window if they don't agree with those values, but this was errors on our part that we would suggest you approve.
Good. I move that we approve these notices. Second.
I, we have a motion and a second to approve these notices. Very small portion of these come before us, Scott. I mean, it's a minuscule amount, given the volume of properties that your office has.
We'd like it to be zero, but I'm not sure that's realistic.
This is awfully close, my friend. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Fleurade?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are public hearings. 4A is forfeit 21 exemption applications for the following years, 2020 and 2021. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the test money about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. The first item here under the exemption applications is two applications that were received for 2020 tax year. Our recommendation is denial on these. The deadline for any 2020 applications was June 30 of 2020. Both these applications came in in December of 2020, I believe, so we would recommend denial on those two. I'll move on to the 2021 applications. I think the simplest way to do this, our recommendation is for approval of every one of those applications. I've got a couple situations that we will note. They're still noted or recommended for approval, but the St. Joseph Institute exemption is a partial exemption for the east half of the building, and that's pursuant to their request and our verification of the use of that building. The other two, there's two applications that have, that filed after December 31, so there's a mandatory late filing penalty. We're recommending approval with the appropriate late filing penalties, and those are for Center Point and for Cause Collective. So recommendation is for approval of all the applications with those three noted asterisks, if you will.
So one's only a partial?
Correct. Half of the, half of the building is exempt, half of it's taxable.
Half the building. And that was which one, Scott?
That was St. Joseph Institute.
Joseph. And the second two, Center Point and Cause?
Yep. Those are approved with the appropriate late filing penalties. I believe Center Points came in in January and Cause Collective came in in March.
Cause Collective?
Correct.
Okay. And those have a late filing fee. So, very good.
Should we go ahead and take action on those two?
Well, I mean, do we have anyone here to speak on those two items, I guess, before we take action? Anyone who'd wish to speak on either of the two items discussed in 4A 1 and 2? Not seeing anyone come.
Are those the ones for 2020? So the one for my bridge?
Twenty?
My bridge for 2020 is a denial because of, it was, our recommendation is for denial because it came in after June 30th, and the law requires it be here by June 30th of 2020. That's our understanding of the law, ma'am, yes. And we've visited with county attorney's office in that regard as well.
That, that's been our problem in the past, ma'am, is when, when these have come before us, and, and there are some pretty strong circumstances at times, but we are governed by the statutes passed by the legislature, and they don't give us any leeway to make allowances. It's those filing deadlines are, are the limit. Okay. And that's why you were here this morning? All right. We just wanted to make sure you were heard and gathering that you were. So I think, we've got someone coming? Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
I will need to swear you in since this is a public hearing. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Tammy Stevenson with the Bridge Behavior Health, and I was just here in case there were any questions about our application. In the past, our application was part taxable and part exempt, and we have discontinued the lease that made that portion of the application taxable. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted as part of the application.
And I can verify that that was part of the recommendation for approval. The application was for a full exemption. It is a modification from the previous partial to a full exemption, but yes, it is, recommendation is for full approval.
Thank you.
Sounds like we're all seeing that from, thank you for being here, Tammy.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on to vote on these two items? All right, Dan.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, if we need to, we will close the public hearing on this portion.
Okay. 5A is 2020 451 tech, or 451 exemption applications.
I would move we deny the 2020 451 exemption applications.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to deny the 2020 451 exempt, exemption applications. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a 2021 451 exemption applications.
I will move approval with two notations that Center Point and Cause Collective are partial. Is that correct?
They're the, they're the approval with the late filing.
They're the approval with a late filing fee, and then St. Joseph Institute is the partial approval.
I would second, yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay. Yeah. We have a, a motion to approve the 2021 exemptions, and with the two, with the noted exceptions for St. Joseph, Center Point, and Cause Collective. And a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a public hearing. Notice of, of proposed change in exemption status for Northern Lighthouse, East Lincoln Christian Church, and Region Five Foundation.
And now we're back in the public hearing?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. These are notices of change in exemption status. All three properties have sold recently, so that triggers an automatic removal of the exemption. I would note that two of these three have sold from one church to another, and we just, in the previous motion, approved the new church's exemption application. The third one was transferred to a private owner, so that will be a taxable property for 2021.
Okay. So the two, two of the three, Scott, are still tax exempt, and we've already approved.
Technically, we, we removed the exemption from the previous owner is what this action would do, and the, the new owner has made application appropriately, and we have just approved those new applications.
And we've already done.
So the, the net effect is one of these will be on the tax roll. The other two were exempt under different ownership.
Okay. Oh, good. Is, okay. Is there anyone here to speak on the change in exemption status for any of these three items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
5C is notices of proposed change in exemption status.
Move approval of the notices?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And then we will open a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, if there's anyone here.
This includes Goodwill Industries serving southeast Nebraska, the Catholic Bishop of Lincoln, Calvary Cemetery, St. Monica's Home, Mosaic Southeast, Lincoln Literacy Council, YMCA of Lincoln, First Lutheran Church, and Christ Place.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemptions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Moving on to 5, 5D, this is motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the exemptions. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride? Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, not on agenda, we do so at this time.
Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment at this time? I see none. We'll close that.
I move, will you adjourn? Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your work this morning. And thanks to Bo and Jamie.
Yes.